...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Wow. Fourteen, fifteen years I've been on board yet and I've never seen another miss vote. Thank you very much. And we'll get to the R and B's. Would you start with Richard, please? I'm sorry, the roll call. I haven't sick, I'm telling you, they have sick ahead of time, okay? That's what's wrong. Not mentally.
Fair enough. All right. I lead to Cooper.
Here.
Ferguson.
Hey, Joe.
Holly.
Here.
Janelyzo. Johnston.
Here.
Cora.
Here.
And Kathy.
Hi.
Ralph.
Hello.
And then Holly.
Here.
Mr. Ferguson, Mr. Janelyzo called an astounding excuse. All right, we have two reputations. What do you want to talk about?
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
Evening.
How was that? Did you work your arse out?
Yes.
Um, did you hear that? This summer, we've, let me just read where it says, "These exemplary features propose unique ideas for professional learning that would impact their classrooms and careers. Through rigorous vetting process, Fund for Teachers is proud to make them as the 2016 grant recipients. The fellows, they will embark on their self-designed professional learning, how to speed development," which is fascinating, "and return with new insights, connections, and tools to benefit their students." With Michael Burnett and Melissa Teal. Come on.
Put the top up. Sure. So this summer through the grant from Fund for Teachers, we both were able to spend a month in Peru taking Spanish classes, doing tours in Spanish, and it is a, from what we have experienced, a really wonderful organization that allows you to design learning opportunities that you can't do during the school year and want to do during the summer, and if you can prove why it is valuable for your class and your students and your school, then they fund it. Don't look into it because we want to apply again. But yeah, we spent the summer in Peru. We did three weeks of individual private Spanish classes, and it was a, it was a pretty amazing experience.
So we got to Ahaque, Machu Picchu, saw a lot of the Ipanoab, and just a really amazing experience. And for me personally, just a new appreciation of what it's like to be an ELL student in the classroom and just understanding some of the struggles that they have, like being in a country where not many people understand what you're saying. For me, it just gave me an appreciation of that type of situation sometimes.
All right, before we go into public participation, there's a tremendous amount of people who wish to attend this room. I know who you are, what you're doing, and I know not a lot of you. I want to ask everyone, do you stand up individually, introduce yourself, and tell us which your school you're in, please? Starting there.
Carrie Johnston, Moore Street School.
Olga Alshaya, Moore Street School.
Jane Taldor, Moore Street School, reading special.
Tom Young, Moore Street School, 4th grade.
Oliver Dyer, Moore Street School, 4th grade.
Kevin Hadad, King Street Intermediate, 4th grade.
Kurt Norrchild, King Street Primary, library media.
It's a merge in, King Street Primary, Kid Heard.
It's a student, Kid Street Intermediate.
Marian Howley, 4th grade, King Street Intermediate.
I'm Dan Belman, speechologist, Moore Street at AIS.
Theresa Barrera, Moore Street.
Sorry, Moore Street School.
Lauren Brown, Pembroke South Street, Ellsworth.
Sherry Turner, Pembroke School.
Crystal O'Leary, Pembroke, Special Education.
Michelle Thierry, AIS, 2nd grade.
Michael Milligan, AIS, 3rd grade.
Ria Sorrentino, AIS, Espanol.
Erin Daly, Pembroke, 3rd grade.
Josh Richter, Pembroke, 5th grade.
Laura Meade, K5, Math, Department Head.
Mary Ellen Robertson, 5th grade, Pembroke.
Elise Tobin, DHS, English.
Devin Samaha, DHS, English.
Agnes Spencer, Haystown, Needy Services.
Tom Kennedy, Connecticut Education Association.
Willard Scott, 4th grade, Scotty Ruff, Danbury, resident.
It's important, too.
I'm a resident, too. I'm Kathy Furman, Haystown, kindergarten.
I'm a resident, too. Caroline Smith, Haystown, ESL.
Erica Jority, Moore Street School, 1st grade, resident.
Wayne Cool, 8th grade, Broadview Middle School.
Nancy E. Bieber, Haystown School, Special Ed, and I'm also a resident.
Pat Steve, Vince Rogers Park, Spanish.
Sam Buck, Danbury High School, Autoski.
Patty Woodmire, Rayclane School, 5th grade.
Doug Tucson, Music at Shelter Rock and Moore Street.
Josh Adon, 2nd grade at Shelter Rock, I'm also a resident.
Mike Cannon, elementary math coach.
Kathleen Johnson, AIS, 3rd grade, resident.
Kim McGedigan, 1st grade, AIS.
Maria Vargas, Power.
Jen Wright, 6th grade, Social Studies, Rogers Park.
Deborah Casey, English, DHS.
Yeah!
Nicole Wallier, 7th grade, Rocky Middle School.
Theresa Kennedy, 8th grade, Rocky Middle School.
Lisa Cryeski, Rogers Park, Math, 6th grade.
Come on in.
Brian Cullough, 7th grade.
We have, we can't hear, I'm sorry.
Come on in. You can't hear him. Just come on in, go out here.
Come on in.
No shouting from the hallways, come on. People can get up off the ground. Where were you?
Go back to Glenda. They couldn't hear her.
That's okay.
Keshan McCorpo, Karen.
Casey Bob, Danbury High, Math.
Brian Cullough, 7th grade, Roger.
Liz Campbell, Shelter Rock, 1st grade.
Margie Jones, South Street School, Library Media.
Becky Meehan, 1st grade, South Street School.
Tina Tenraro, South Street School, Kindergarten.
Nicole Robertson, South Street School, Kindergarten.
Melissa Teal, DHS, English, and also a resident.
Michael Burnett, DHS, Art Department.
Daniel Haytor, Rogers Park, Social Studies.
Yoldum Monti, Rogers Park, 8th grade, English, also a resident.
Deanna Haytor, Ellsworth Avenue, 4th grade.
Cheryl Ernst, Rogers Park, 8th grade, Reading.
Rachel Housh, New School Science.
Brina Clayso, 7th grade, English, Rogers Park.
Mitch Peterson, 7th grade, English, Rocky Middle School, resident.
George Delanti, 7th grade, Reading, New School, resident.
Joel Terium, 8th grade, Special Ed, and also a resident.
Emily Enfran, 8th grade, Reading, Rogers Park, also a resident.
Laura Puckinselli, 2nd grade, Shelter Rock, resident.
And the parents.
No!
Hi, I'm Lori Woodruff, I teach 4th grade at AIS, and I'm a resident also.
Allison Hauser, South Street School, Grade 3.
Will Hauser, Pembroke, AIS, Technical Education.
Tim Nat, 4th grade, AIS.
Hi, my name is Quinney Neam, I'm going to teach at AIS, 2nd grade.
Lisa Marsolio, AIS, Special Ed, and also Danbury.
Hi, Tommy LaVoy, AIS, 5th grade, and a resident.
Ruth Dyer, 2nd grade, AIS.
Golden, Danbury High School, Mathematics.
Sue Neon, Danbury High School, Social Studies, and a resident.
Kathy Boucher, Danbury High School, Social Studies teacher, and I went to school here. This used to be the gym.
Joe Boss, proudly Danbury High School, resident. Two children graduated, two more in the system. I'd like to see it go on forever.
Robert Lell, Times Sector, Social Studies, parent and resident.
Eric Savoisky, Danbury High School, Technology Education.
That stints English to high school, but you can tell I'm still 16 years old, and I'm just, there's five of my former students that are here as my co-learners. I just thank God for Danbury.
Claire Bernardo, Clark Avenue, ESL.
Tristan Lang, Math Coach, Ellsworth and AIS, resident and proud parent.
Pamela O'Neill, 5th grade at Moore Street School, and speaking of former students, and now, Abby, so I'll throw you.
Tracy Scowell, Kindergarten, Moore Street. That's it.
This is literally the first day I get to speak. I'm just kidding.
Thank you so much. Yes, and I'm real thrilled that I can talk right now, but thank you very, very much for what you all do. Thank you. All right, moving forward. Public participation. I have, let's start with, I've actually signed up. Kevin Hadad, what a surprise. You're on. He's also a resident.
It's a new microphone since my last visit, so. Kevin Hadad, resident. Looking around, seeing all these great colleagues of mine, I was very disturbed to see in the last four minutes the number of teachers that resigned from the district this past summer. As someone who's held leadership roles with NEA at the local, state, and national levels, I hear complaints, I hear concerns from teachers quite often, and I know, and I knew morale was low in our district, but until I saw the number of resignations, I didn't know it was that bad. As someone who grew up in this town and plans to stay here, I want the best for the children of Danbury, and I know a school system where there's constant turnover of teachers is not the best for them. It makes me wonder if this board has fallen out of touch with the heavy workload its teachers endure. More and more demands have been placed on us. Just this school year alone, the first week of school, we spent giving in grades 3 to 5, three different 45-minute writing prompts, and if that sounds intense, it is if you're an eight-year-old in an 85-degree classroom, just so we could have baseline data on them. I then have to score all 75 of those prompts on a variety of data points and enter all of that into Power School. Then the grading system changed and we had to rescore some of them. I'll have to give math benchmark quizzes this year, that's new, three times a year. I'll have to enter that into Power School, along with a myriad of other things that need to be entered into Power School, including report cards and interim reports. I'll need to review star testing data, and when I'm not collecting or entering data or trying to figure out an ever-changing teacher evaluation plan, I'm busy planning my reading curriculum, writing curriculum, math lessons that have been designed by math coaches who are so busy planning that, they don't work, they don't have the time to work with students anymore. I'm planning small group guided reading, vocabulary, word work, science, social studies, tracking data on my SRPI students, and then some of the limited planned time I have seems to be getting chipped away at. This year, teachers were given an instructional time pie to guide us minute by minute, and we had to submit our schedule of how our day is planned. I won't get into the specifics of it, but I haven't met a teacher yet who feels like they can really follow it specifically to the minute. Teachers feel like they need a voice, and I feel like this has become a top-down district. I hope this board gets out into the schools, gets to know the teachers, and find out what we're going through day to day, and really experience it with us. Thank you.
I'm glad I get to follow Kevin. I'm glad I get to follow Kevin, because all those things that he talked about, that is not teaching. Not a bit of that data collection has anything to do with teaching. So I know that most of you saw an invitation, and I also know that most of you work five or six or seven days a week, but I also know that there's nothing like getting out of work all week to have fun on a Friday afternoon. That's why I've given each of you a personal invitation to join my students and me on October 14th. Plenty of time to make plans. I think you'll enjoy it, but you really need to RSVP with a really good excuse if you can't make it. Space is limited, so you'll have to make your reservation all week. We're going to be doing what teachers really do, and so we're going to take this and we're going to turn it into the earth. But it takes a lot of preparation, and it takes a lot of time, motor skills, and so kids can use all the adult help they can get. And if I got even nine of you involved, it would make my job a lot easier. So I just hope you'll come and appreciate what it is that we really do, because it's not about bench training. It's not about testing, it's about teaching kids how to run. Thank you.
I'll be there. Tom Young, also from Morris.
Okay, as the record shows, Tom Young, also of Morris Street, 4th grade. I would like to let you know that we had a wonderful first few days of school. Kids came in, they were ready to learn, they were happy to be there, and as always, Morris Street School, and I'm sure the rest of Danbury public schools, the teachers were right there, trying to make them feel welcome, make them feel good, make them always feel successful. So let's give a round of applause to all Danbury public school teachers. We had a very good open house, very well attended last week, which is really a testament to our teachers, because we are the highest poverty district within the district. So to get parents to come in, to want to help their children to learn more, is a wonderful, wonderful thing. And I wanted to thank the administration, Dr. Sal, I'm sorry, too, just a little take up, and the board, and everyone else, because over the summer, we did get new floors, so we got rid of some awful, awful carpeting. You come into the school, it's as shiny as my head. It looks really good. Also, Dr. Sal, thank you for your visit last fall. You had commented on the walls of my room, and we got our walls painted, so they look great. So thank you very much.
Is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak? Anyone?
Hi, my name's Kathy Woodruff, a resident. My daughter's a junior at Danbury High. I'd like to bring the attention of the board, the non-refunds that have been discussed, and to all of the topics.
Too much feedback.
So I want to bring that to your attention, and I need some help getting my money back in the 40 years that have gone.
I don't know if you know that I didn't do the speech before public participation. We don't comment on what you say, Eric Sir, but our administrators take notes and will contact you during the meeting.
Yeah, I have a letter from my leadership department that I have sent out, and we couldn't pitch much, and we need some help. We need some direction and guidance. So I'm a little frustrated with moving $3,500, and I don't think we should take that. My name is, I'll write it down next chance, but thank you for my.
Yeah, I actually have one right here. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak? Anyone in rows two, row three, five, four? Anyone along the walls? Anyone sitting on the ground anywhere that is having trouble getting up or something like that? Seriously, there's nobody else seeing, no one? Okay, seeing that, we're going to move on to our consent calendar.
Oh, did I miss the employee representative part?
Oh.
Or is that coming up? Sorry. Okay, sorry.
I have an agenda.
I don't, I'm sorry. On many levels.
That the Board of Education approved the items on the consent calendar, exhibit 16-118 through 16-120 as recommended.
Second, Holly? No, Kathy, I'm sorry. Is there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll bring my own's all in favor. Is there an employee representative in the queue?
Sorry, this is my one year, so I forgot how it goes.
I know you were, so.
Sam Buck, Danbury High School, President of NEA, Danbury. We just wanted to touch base with you, we, this is the beginning of the year. Last year, we started sending, actually, two years, I guess, we started sending schools here in place of you guys having to listen to me every, maybe twice a month.
I mean, thank you for that.
This is not my comfort level of a seat, you know? Morris Street was up today to tell you guys what was going on, and we expect to have a school here each week to bring you guys up to date on what's going on in their building. As for some of the other things that were hit on this year, today, earlier, we have the same concerns as the fourth. High turnover, as we know you guys are very concerned about, and we are as well, and we are more than willing to work with the board on trying to find a solution. Am I saying that correctly? And we just want you to know that we are available for your help out with this, and we look forward to continuing a good relationship with you folks. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I don't see these student representatives, you people scared them. Okay, so there's no parking, they're driving around. It's good. Before we go into the presentation, Morris Street is here, and Morris Street is not just here to sit in the chairs, they're coming to tell us about them. This was the trade-off that Sam and I sort of made when we started to talk about, might we as a group, electrically, want to go to see what happens in the schools. Logistically, our administrators are, were like, we're going to move a meeting every other week, it's whatever, so we came to the agreement that you all would come and tell us what you're doing, so that we actually should know what goes on. That's why we asked that the PTOs and everybody, come and tell us what you do, and that's what's probably this presentation. What makes you different than South Street, or, you know, so on and so forth. You're on, Morris Street. They give you a presentation?
I thought I was supposed to sign in, and so I did, so I may be out of order, but we know I'm not really out of order.
Do you want to do it again?
I can.
Just play the tape.
Do it with an accent.
You mentioned the floor title, so you're okay with that. I actually didn't.
Thank you very much. Okay. It's been nice seeing you. Thank you.
Thank you. Just on a side note, Mr. Young has secured a discount, and at two steps, if you guys get done early enough, they've offered it to anybody showing up who's an employee or supervisor of Danbury Board of Education.
Do you have to push shirt out, or no?
You might let this slide.
You took care of my school, you get in.
We had a very interesting, maybe one state before you run out, I know that it's inconvenient, but we had a very good presentation tonight. Terry Budlong is here. Terry, would you like to go on? She's the Director of Prevention Services for MCCA. It's a presentation of Stand Together and Make a Difference, Student Study.
Thanks so much for having me. As Eileen mentioned, I'm the Director of Prevention Services for the Big Western Connecticut Council on Alcoholism. We operate under a grant with the Department of Mental Health and Salvation Services. And as part of my job, I work very closely with our local Substance Abuse Prevention Council, Stand Together, Make a Difference. Eileen, Richard, and Holly are a part of that coalition, and their objective is to really help design prevention activities here in Danbury. I've given you some additional handouts, in addition to the student survey summary that's in front of you, and I just wanted to call your attention to the first handout, which is a wheel of sector representation that we have on our local coalition. We try to get as many people involved as possible to help direct prevention services, and we are continuing to do a better and better job, particularly with the help of people like the Board of Ed. So this, these folks, these sectors are part of our coalition. I'm here tonight to really talk about this student summary that's in front of you. Obviously, I'm not going to go through the whole thing, but I do want to reference specific graphs and call your attention to some tables. We do, in Danbury, at the high school, grades 9 through 12, a student survey through the National Search Institute. They have been doing research on what they have labeled as developmental assets for about 40 years. For about 20 years, they've used this student survey as an instrument to really measure student attitudes and behaviors. And if you look at your second handout, it gives you a list of the 40 developmental assets that they specify. So our student survey asks questions pertaining to these 40 developmental assets. So what is a developmental asset? The first couple pages of your summary kind of explain that, but in brief, a developmental asset really is a building block for helping development. And it doesn't matter what your economic status is, what ethnicity you are, whether you're male or female, as to whether or not you engage in this, you engage in. The most important thing in a child's life are these developmental assets. The more assets they have working for them, even at an early age, the better off they are in life. So this survey that we give every three years, we drug use that's not prescribed to the child. Those are the four core substances that are measured through this survey. If you look at the second handout, you will see a further explanation of each one of those assets, just to give you a better idea of what each one of those are. So I just, I wanted to mention that before I forgot. So we are interested in building these assets among our kids, from elementary school all the way to the high school. And if you look in your actual student survey summary, on page, page thirteen, yes, page thirteen, table fifteen, which is at the bottom, it breaks out from 2010. You can see that of the forty developmental assets, more kids today have more of those assets than they did in 2010. So that is a good thing. We are in the process of raising the amount of developmental assets that a child has. We've gone from about an eighteen point six average of assets in our children to nineteen point four. And that doesn't sound like a lot, but it truly is. If you look at figure ten, the pie right above that table, you can see, look particularly at the six percent. That is the amount of kids at the high school, remember, we're just talking nine through twelve, we do the survey. That six percent represents kids that are saying that they have thirty-one to forty of the developmental assets working for them. What we want to do is see that piece of the pie increase, so more kids have more assets and fewer kids are engaging in risky behaviors. If you look at page twelve of your summary, you will see a breakdown. The developmental assets fall into two categories: internal assets and external assets. There are twenty of each. The internal assets are nurturing assets. And we've increased since 2013, nine of the twenty internal assets that the students report having. In relationship to external assets, these are really the support assets. They're what communities, schools, parents, neighborhoods provide for children. And they really are more accessible to us in regard to changing the percentages. We've increased, we've seen an increase in eleven of the twenty external assets. And if you take a look at page twelve, I just wanted to call your attention to the boundaries and expectations category, because these assets are known to have the biggest impact on past thirty-day substance use among students. So if you look at the next handout that I gave you, it says developmental assets in Danbury youth. We've broken up the external and internal assets and just given you three of the highest and three of the lowest ranking assets of each. So for example, family support under external assets. Kids in Danbury, seventy-two percent of them are saying they've got good family support. Look at one of the lower external assets, community values youth. This has been rated low the last three times we've done the survey. Eighteen percent of the kids in Danbury feel that the community values youth. So this is something that we, as a community, can help change by showing kids that we do in fact value them. And your last handout that I have given you, if you look at the second page, and look at the top of that page, community values youth. I've listed for you the actual questions in the survey that are asked the students pertaining to that, just to give you an idea of the kinds of questions that are asked on the survey. So adults in my town or city make me feel important. Adults in my town or city listen to what I have to say. They don't care about people my age. I feel like I'm mad at people. And kids answer, they strongly agree, they agree, they're not sure, they disagree, or they strongly disagree. And that's how the data is calculated. So I just, I wanted to give you an example of some of the actual questions that were asked on the survey, so you'd have an idea. So that is just kind of in a nutshell, developmental assets. And I was asked to give you an idea of how we're distributing this information and trying to get the community involved. Obviously, we wanted to start with you and give you, Dr. Stow and Dana Long, at the high school, this summary. If you want the one-hundred-and-seven-page report, I'll be happy to supply it. Richard, actually, and Eileen too, has a copy of that report, but this summary gives you a really good idea of what's in that report. So we wanted to start with you all. I do have a presentation with the PTO, City Council, City White Council, on November fifth, to give them some of this information. I've told Dan that I'd be happy to speak to his administrators at the high school. I've talked to the school psychologists at the high school about getting this information into the hands of kids. One of the things that are rated very high amongst students is that they value the diversity that Danbury offers. That is a great thing to be proud of. So why not let the students decide what positive assets they'd like to highlight and run with it? I understand DECA can use this information on projects. There's a lot of different ways that students can utilize a lot of this information. As time goes on, I want to work with the middle school principals on sending some of this information out via email last to the parents, utilizing school websites and agencies in the community. I would like to work with the elementary and middle school principals on perhaps highlighting a developmental asset each week in the school, and really get everybody on board and on the same page to help build these assets in kids. By the time kids at Moore Street and some of these other schools are in high school, we could expect most of the kids to be in the range of thirty-one to forty assets. I'm also involved in speaking to the PTOs and giving presentations in the faith-based community. I gave one to a Portuguese-speaking group of pastors this morning, which was interesting because I don't speak Portuguese. On December fifth, I wanted to let you know that we are having a community forum to give the community some of this information. And we will also have a panel with a student and a parent and some other representatives talking about what affects them in regard to some of these developmental assets. So in closing, I would just like you to take a look at page four, thirty-day use rates. In addition to the four core substances that we measure, we also measure thirty-day substance use rates among students. We measure parental disapproval, how a child feels their parents feel about substance use or use. We measure how their peers, how a child feels their peers feel about substance use. And we also measure the perception of risk that students have. So you can see by this graph on the top of the page, let's take alcohol, for example. In 2010, thirty-seven percent of Danbury High School students reported using alcohol in the past thirty days. Today, in 2016, twenty-five percent report having used alcohol. We have decreased their past thirty-day use in all of these four core substances across all grades nine through twelve. So this is a great, great advance that we're making here in Danbury. I would like, in thinking and being mindful of these statistics, to note, though, that twenty-five percent of the total population at the high school is about seven-hundred-and-fifty, seven-hundred-and-seventy-five kids. I think this year, we actually have thirty-one hundred, approximately thirty-one hundred students at Danbury High School. So that's like a whole grade, grades worth of kids, who are still engaging in past thirty-day use. And we want to continue to see that decrease. Finally, on page seven, I wanted to call your attention to this information at the top table, which really illustrates the importance that parents play in a child's life. Parents still are the greatest influence in any child's life, and their ability to be a positive role model is vital to the health and well-being of that student. We know, and we have now data that support the fact that when a child believes that their parent believes that it is inappropriate, wrong, unhealthy to engage in any kind of risky behavior or substance use, that child is less apt to engage in activity when given the opportunity. Those children who feel their parents just believe it's part of growing up, everybody does it, it's a stage they're getting out of, or perhaps their parent smokes pot and thinks it's fine, those students are far more apt to engage themselves in substances and other risky behaviors. So we know the importance, and this is from a student perspective, that a parent plays in a child's life. So in closing, I thank you for being a part of this downward trend. I certainly, it's my professional opinion, that we need to continue and expand prevention services. We need to be in the schools, and I'm readily available to do that. And we really, really thank you all for being a part of this downward trend and upward trend with developmental assets. So if you have any questions, please feel free to phone me, Eileen is out to reach me. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Charlie. Thanks very much. There's anybody who have any questions up to?
Are you going to?
Okay, you can go. As long as you see, I'll see you.
I always tell you, I always, sorry.
Ash, nine.
That the Board of Education accept the June 2016 Operating Results Analysis General Fund, ten-four-sixty-sixteen, and one-two-one.
Any questions?
Joe, can you just give us a quick synopsis of the latest?
Quick synopsis, another challenging here is all years ago, we did turn back over the city six-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, which we transferred to reserve funds with the city, bringing about around five and a half, six million dollars, and then how the auditors were off the fund. We did see, continue some strength in the upper sour line, but obviously, some of the medical issues were transferred down, and you see some of the sublines really got pummeled, is the right term there. So we did see that. We did see some big purchases, some of the common core materials that at the end of the year as well. All in all, I mean, a good year, we're in balance. It was a little tighter at the end, but the six-hundred-and-fifty got to the city, it's a good promise that we have to make to them. So all in all, a good year. Auditors are still in, so these are, these are our final numbers, but once the audit squares off, they'll be probably just manipulate the settlement.
Six-hundred-and-fifty thousand returned, all of them was returned to the city?
Yeah, that's transferred to our health insurance reserve fund.
They transferred.
Yeah, we've got to check right at the city, and they, they entered offering for that.
So just to go, how much, what's the, what's the goal of the end account?
Right, to be fully reserved for health, maybe about six, six-point-eight million or so, is actually, sure, about eight-hundred thousand, which to be, which we're only now really on a third year of self-insure, is pretty good. So, and trending well. This year, we're up for, highs are a little higher than I was, which last year, I'm sure it loved dialogues, which typically was a real abnormality. So that's why we could see good climb.
Thanks, Joe. Anybody else, anybody else have any questions at Joe? Seeing my all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
That the Board of Education accept the June 2016 Operating Results Analysis Grants Projects in accordance with sixteen dash one-twenty-two.
Second by Gladys. Any questions?
Any successes? How did the, how did the grant writer work out? And unfortunately, no longer, but I mean, what did we stand?
We did contract with a grant company, which is a consultant, or a smaller scope. We have had some bumps in the road along the way. We had, actually, we've got denial on the state grant today due to funding, I think. There was what's called a low-performing bond grant, which dealt, which were ACE, Ellsworth High School. The grant never got funded, so we're trying to figure out. Meriden got denied, a lot of big schools just got denied. How many got funded all through that, that funding stream? So we did get another filing on that one. So nothing big on grant front, major changes there, I'll say, so far. It was a no-you may grant, we're looking at for technology, more of a pilot, not a big, big grant there. Anything else to add, Dr. Stow?
No, it's just disappointing, can't seem to.
Oh, the city, we had, we had a city grant, which is federal funding. And we're still trying to get to the bottom of what happened with the state on that one. Feedback was very well-written, very well-done, so we're trying to figure out quickly the bottom of where.
Show me the money, they said, no.
Yeah, I mean, so.
So we wrote them and asked them to come down and go over with us. And it was well-written, what was the, what was, what was the issue?
What was missing?
Demonstrated to us, so we could.
There's two more funding rounds for SIG, so there's good news there, I guess, there's a, there's a, there's a smaller round and a larger round coming.
Any net loss for operating sixteen seventeen?
In grants?
Yeah.
No, we're going into sixteen seventeen, we have a cut in priority for about a hundred-and-fifty thousand. Madge's whole grant is a little concerning, because we have a conference call to have done, I believe, this Friday, and there was a cut in the grant, but they haven't squared up with the actual funding it's gonna be, so I'm a little concerned with what's going on there.
There's a study committee that's releasing their study, and making recommendations that, you see, seventy-five million?
Seventy-five per child.
Per child, which is a lot of your expense with our co-op schools. But we're out of C J, we're near home, so ours is totally voluntary. The C J group, they're excited by wanting to participate. So we're trying to find out if they're reducing that amount. We built our budget on that amount. And we're looking on our student, what, three thousand?
We get three thousand per student, so. We projected about a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar cut in the grant. Again, I haven't had a fine priority, I do know is about a hundred-and-fifty, we did lose in that grant. Other grants were pretty much net flat, but yeah, we're concerned about that, but Madge was all in this kind of.
But don't we also lose basically three percent per year on branches due to salary increases?
We do in general, there is some.
The grant stays fixed, whereas our operating.
Yeah, there is some increases in IDA, they're actually twenty-five.
Second by Gladys. Any questions?
Any successes? How did the, how did the grant writer work out? And unfortunately, no longer, but I mean, what did it stand?
We did contract with a grant company, which is a consultant, or a smaller scope. We have had some bumps in the road along the way. We had, actually, we've got denial on the state grant today. Due to funding, I think, there was a, what's called a low performing bond grant, which dealt with Ace Ellsworth High School. The grant never got funded, so we're trying to figure out, Meriden got denied, a lot of big schools just got denied, how many got funded all through that, that funding stream? So we did get notified on that one. So nothing big on grant front, major changes there, I'll say, so far. There's a no you may grant, we're looking at for technology, more of a pilot, not a big, big grant there. Anything else to add, Dr. Sal?
No, it's just disappointing, can't seem to...
Oh, the city, we had, we had a city grant, which is federal funding, and we're still trying to get to the bottom of what happened with the state on that one. Feedback was very well written, very well done, so we're trying to figure out, get to the bottom of it.
Show me the money, they said, no.
Yeah, I mean, so...
So we wrote them and asked them to come down and go over with us, and it was well written. What, what was the, what was, what was the issue?
What was missing?
Demonstrated to us, so we could get some...
There's two more funding rounds for SIG, so there's good news there, I guess there's a, there's a, there's a smaller round and a larger round coming, I understand.
Any net loss for operating sixteen seventeen?
In grants?
Yeah.
No, we're going into sixteen seventeen, we have a cut in priority for about a hundred and fifty thousand. Medicaid school grant, it is a little concerning, because we have a conference call to have done, I believe, this Friday, and there was a cut in the grant, but they haven't squared up what the actual funding is going to be, so I'm a little concerned with what's going on there.
There's a study committee that's releasing their study, and making recommendations about, usually seeing seventy-five million?
Seventy-five per child.
Per child, which is a lot of their extent, but our co-op schools, but we're out of C J, we're near home, so ours is totally voluntary. The C J group, very glad I want to participate, so, okay. We're trying to find out if they're reducing that amount. We built our budget on that amount, and we're looking on our student, what, three thousand?
We get three thousand per student, so we projected about a hundred and fifty thousand dollar cut in the grant. Again, I haven't had a font priority, I do know is about a hundred and fifty we did lose in that grant. Other grants were pretty much net flat, but yeah, we're concerned about that, but Medicaid was all in this time.
But don't we also lose basically three percent per year on grants, just due to salary increases?
We do in general, there is some...
The grant stays fixed, whereas our, our operating...
Yeah, there is some increases in IDA, they're actually made twenty-five or thirty thousand, but typically in every grant, there's always a little bit of shift. You might see resignation, or we might have a person that might transfer to another role, so it's usually, thankfully, a little bit of shift that happens every year in the grants. Because I mean, I look at ECS now, it's probably a hundred plus people in it now, so the odds of, you know, one or two shifting around, so thankfully, every year, that, that math generally works, which is a good thing. So that's, I mean, all in all, it, it usually holds pretty well. Medicaid's been good, Kelly's been doing a lot of good work, I'm now trying to drill more money in that grant, so it's been, I think that, that grant's come in, that's, that's all probably two hundred thousand dollars in the last two or three years, so that's been, that's a pretty good place for us.
And by the way, that money will go to help pay for the nurses.
Yeah, nurses, psychologists.
When we do that, then the rate will use more in the schools.
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this is C.
The Board of Education authorized the use of building rental funds for the replacement of tile and carpeting in the DHS auditorium, both levels, thirty-five thousand, and replacement of sound system in the main gym at DHS, fifteen thousand, in accordance with sixteen dash one-twenty-three.
Second. Any questions? Richard?
My only concern is, doesn't this tie into the remodel? So isn't it kind of like, it'll be, it'll be done again?
Not at all.
With the tree, especially into the gymnasium?
It's not eligible, because they're building a new gym, or it's...
Right.
Inside the current high school, they're not, they're not touching, they did a sprinkler system job inside the auditorium at, at the high school. There's no money in that project to do any other work, or it's all, all the bonding is going towards the addition, the black box theater, the roof, in other words, there's nothing else in there that's going to be freed up, at least at this moment in time.
Wasn't the gymnasium also tied into that?
No, there's a, there's a new gym and addition.
Okay.
Yeah. The auditorium carpeting, when they finished it as part of the project, the carpeting was on its last legs to begin with, and it, it really, they, the guys did re-sprub it, and it's, it's seen better days. The upper mezzanine event is not there, that carpeting is, I basically say it's coming in rattles, is all my call, it's, it's probably original to school. It's in touch shape, so, and the speakers will be in the gym. Yeah, the gym, the gyms?
(inaudible)
You know, our original idea was to gut the gyms, make those classrooms, and expand into a field house, maybe that's what you're thinking about, and that got you crazy, so, so we didn't get into that.
Okay, all in favor? Pictures of it?
Pictures, sure, I'll take them, we don't want this to happen.
But if it wasn't for the rental fund, you'd really...
Yeah, the rental does a lot, right, it sounds, no question, a lot, a lot.
So we shouldn't go down, Richard?
No, I, I, it's a reason, I mean, I, let's just say, even though we did a new fee structure, I haven't had any complaints about, you know, people really getting crazy about the fees or anything, so, and if we have big groups that rent a lot, we've always done little deals or something.
I know. All righty, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, D.
The Board of Education approved the educational specifications for the replacement of oil tank at Rogers Middle School in accordance with sixteen dash one-twenty-four.
Second by... Oh, Holly, Holly. (inaudible)
Ten thousand gallon oil tank, these are, these are nice.
Really?
They're beautiful.
Beautiful, again, we're giving pictures. Okay. Are there any questions? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank God, because you're beautiful. Okay, go ahead, you may.
The Board of Education approved the educational specifications for the replacement of oil tank at Rogers Park Middle School in accordance with sixteen dash one-two-five.
(inaudible) Second by Gladys. Any questions?
The city's...
There is a question, go ahead, yeah?
The city is there.
Yeah, these were, these were city run projects, we've actually never submitted for inverse oil tanks, they're state eligible now, and each, the total cost of each altogether is a half million bucks between the two, you know, we'll literally also sixty-three percent eligible, so, we've already established all the stuff with the cities, these are the specs, and we'll, we'll give it a go through the state.
Do we have dual energy?
Yes. Rogers and Rogers are both dual fuel, you have about six schools that are oil only, just because we can't, like AIS, like can't get natural gas out there, so there's, there's about Ellsworth, there's about five or six that are oil only, but you got all are dual fuel.
Of course.
Yeah, we got city one somewhere.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank goodness, there you go. All right, we're moving on to Dr. Pat's case.
Okay, thank you. Shelter Rock portable classrooms, it's been difficult to say at least.
Yeah.
It is, I can't believe the hoops they're putting us through, but those are diligent, they're working with the state, they've asked for a number of things, but the, we did award the contract.
Yep.
To, to a company out of...
Nadler modules, they are out of New York, I've turned down.
And they existed new modules, their bid came in at three fifty, they anticipated four fifty, the next bid was six fifty.
Six fifty, which is a vertical corporation.
So we vetted them, met with the architect, looked at, looked at the material, and he's already begun workforce, even after we've had to vet the contract, that's been our latest hurdle to jump, but we've got the contract vetted now.
We do have contracts vetted, the approval under Friar, the Corporation Council done some quick turn around.
While this was going on here, ready to, gentlemen, ready to put in the orders, did the, they were, I'm disappointed, I thought we didn't have this by Columbus Day, that's a pipe dream.
Okay.
So when do we think we're going to have?
I'm, I'm thinking quite about the time you carve your turkey, give or take, is when we drop them in the night time.
I mean, just a reminder, we have, teachers have been really kind of diligent, we had double classes in two of our rooms, they said it's okay, but certainly not what we want. We thought, we thought maybe by Columbus Day, and then we thought maybe by Halloween. We're not going April Fool's, are we?
No, sir.
So we should be in by Thanksgiving.
The only debate we're having now is the, right now, there's, there's an option of what's like a covered breezeway, but obviously, the most secure way is to have a fully enclosed breezeway, or, sorry, a locking corner, like it's a regular enclosed hallway. Timing wise, we may go with a covered breezeway for now and close it as we get a little later, just based on timing, so we're going to see how that all happens. And we have enough money, the good news is, to do the enclosure, there, there's a half million dollars inside that bond, so there's plenty of money to get it done, not worried about that, it's a change, or it's reimbursed by the state, not a big deal, but just to save getting the whole thing done and rolling, so that's good there.
And it'll be a lot, it's a lot safer for students.
Much safer for students, we've already got color samples, got yourself one there, secured the bond already, we've got the contract language open, so thankfully, he's actually kind of working in, in conjunction against his contract, which is really, is a really good thing. He's done a lot of work for MTA, Metro North, they did some work in Dot New Jersey, New Jersey Schools, so I mean, all the references came back good, it was, it's a great process to do rounds.
Did bring our resort, that's what we did, yeah. Not general contractors.
So, has, has the enrollment stabilized at Shelter Rock, or are we still seeing about...
Enrollment's about thirty students, I believe.
Just at Shelter?
Yeah, just at Shelter. District wide, as the numbers had the other day, you're at two fifty-five, it's two point five percent, that's it right now.
The number as a comparison would be at October one, but it's about two fifty.
It's thirty within Shelter Rock.
Yeah.
We had that section to...
Is that a little bit better overall than what was, I thought we were...
Banding around a number of around three hundred or something for expectations. We're a little ahead where we were last year, so I, I mean, typically, we'll still see overgrowth by October.
Just a reminder, we do have the group that's doing the study for us again, we have been one and a half percent a year, two and a half percent a year, so they're going out and they're checking the live birth, checking the build outs, all that stuff we've been through, to give us, give us all a better handle on what's going to happen. But unusually, Shelter Rock has a situation that's much more, it seems to flux, people are moving out of the homes, we understand, and then it being back to what...
And shelter more, which rates...
Low enough, we have more, that's what's going on.
Shelter Rock's at tw- up twenty-eight students, five hundred and forty-six, as of September twenty, who's actually already home.
So, so anyway, it is working, and we're really pleased, and I want to thank the state if, and if there is an interpretation.
I know it's been a lot of work getting it to this point, but now that that's going to be vetted, and, and once, like, once they come, I mean, there'll be nothing to put them on...
Oh, no, yeah, once, once they come, because the second the contract gets approved, site work can begin, they literally come in on trailers, I mean, it's, it's...
And place them right on...
Yeah, it's, it's, you know, I never try to make it sound too simple, but it is a fairly easy process, I mean, in theory, about a week, by the time, the biggest time we build a deck and they connect to the school, when they literally come in on trailers, they pull the wheels off, and they mount on it, that's literally how they go, so there's the power feeds and all that. Yeah, the power's actually, luckily, on this whole deal, the power's sitting around the side of the school, I mean, it's like feet away, I mean, we really got ridiculous luck on the early comes in. There's no septic line beneath the thing, which I was sure it will be, you know, God knows what underneath there will strike oil, who knows? So...
The only thing that Shelter Rock's challenged with a number of kids that are hurt in school?
Yes.
So today, the officer from...
Traffic, the traffic, Abdul was out today looking at traffic flow and traffic patterns. I'm a little optimistic, I think, with some of the money left inside this bond, they could do a little bit of work on the parking lot out there, I think, and modify that sum, so we're going to keep, or people are working on that. He was offered, he gave us some...
The drop off, because we're taking that home.
Luck, it's luck, it's finding...
So anyway, it's, it's moving on, but just not as best, we all hope, so, and I, I can use the time tomorrow, so she can keep the parents and the mother and the family. C J, yes, I put that in here for you, you know, it's, it's kind of evolving, we don't know when they're going to make a decision, but we asked the judges, you can see here, to look at both the funding mechanism, as well as the, the equity and access part, which the state only had one, we wanted to look at, at the C, that's what C J had asked, so apparently, they have accepted that. The Big Six is a group of all, the CAPS, the teachers group, is almost looking at the funding, that's what that is, they're ready to make a recommendation, probably to the state legislature about how to fund schools. The, the, in extent, the municipal government group also is looking at a recommendation for how to fund schools. You may recall, I'm trying to think of the name, first we did the presentation for us, Joe, on the funding from the equity group.
Oh, Kate Roy.
Kate Roy, her group came over in all to the way, and how to fund special education. State's really interested in that, she's going to be doing a presentation for us, they're basically creating a super fund and drawing from it in a different fashion, so instead of us getting access costs, they're going to start, so we'll see, but the state is interested in it, and may help people out of our balance, like a balance in terms of the commitment, so we'll close there. But this is what we'll be doing, I'll be, again, I'll be, you know, the co-chair of COAS, will we monitor it, it's the best we can, we can hope right now, is that come back with a decision, but we don't know when, it's a little slow on it. So right now, I don't expect any change until next year, I'm just a state. The Danbury College Upper Tonne Program, I put in with applying to funds, and said that's a grant, to continue to do that, I noted the university in terms of coursework, we still, there's still a small grant that's left in the state, the current sophomore, the second year students, but as we move through here, trying to fund more and more money, fund the courses, the college courses, there's two courses being offered this year for us, so we're still involved in it, we're still looking for funds for this. And some of the grants that we wrote, had this in mind, even with the path, where everybody sold them up here, manufactured, but nobody wants to step up, you know, this one, this one. The budget update is freeze?
Yeah. Yeah, budget front's not as exciting as I like to see it, at least at this time of the year. Now, we did run into a, a bad jam in bussing, we actually had to add one mini and three full-size buses, which is, which is pretty unheard of right now. The additional hundred students at West Side really did spread us further out than we originally planned there, so we did see their high school, we saw some major overloads there, we had to divide runs, we had ninety, a hundred kids in some of these runs, we had no choice but to split them. High school runs, anywhere fifty, you start putting, you know, you know, full-size high school kids on buses, it doesn't look good, they're supposed to seat seventy-two, but that's, assuming they're kindergartners. So you, you, those four buses alone cost the board two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Staffing as well, we did add a teacher at Shelter, actually, two teachers at Shelter, South Street, so I'm looking at at least three unbudgeted F T's, if not four there, so that's about three hundred thousand, so that puts this out of the gate about a half a million. I didn't really like our July and August medical claims, so right now, I'm recommending a freeze, we're monitoring, I'm not in panic mode yet, and as I said, the board, but right now, we're going to keep a real close eye on things, it's a little, the buses were really a, a complete shock, to be honest. Usually, always had one, maybe two, typically not, never that bad. So, and just actually, on a side note, I'm rolling one thing, Shell South Street's school's up ten percent this year for a moment. You want to talk about a school that completely, you know, super, on Westfield, there are thirty-five students, and that's, I mean, Shell, that's only, you know, just shot at four hundred at South Street, that's not a big school at all, so, we're going to add a kindergarten.
You had to add a kindergarten?
Yeah, there's not four kindergarten at South Street, we literally, we literally shifted the principal out of our office into the conference room, and it was, it's really the last move we've made at South Street, I mean, if we, if we continue that road at South Street, we have no one left that's a shoe worn in another grade, and it's not possible.
For the boards, I have to mention, we're in our, I think the fourth year of the redistricting, we're promising parents, four to five years, so this study is looking at that, we did pop the redistricting, the only difference in our plan has been, you know, we had those eighteen classrooms, hadn't anticipated adding four at Shelter, but Shelter over the last four years, we had twelve classrooms.
Okay.
We did, so it's something we haven't added, you know, we have, so we're going to have to look at how this is going to play into, and where we might either build, which I think that's going to be a challenge, or add some more modules to the balance, because we can't just move kids around, we're all kind of...
No, it's nowhere to redistrict too, you need at least four to five classrooms to ship kids into, and there's no four or five classrooms sitting around, so...
And you're at the teacher's time, there's a lot of stuff going on, start moving kids move around with art class and music class, it just creates havoc, and that's what we're going to start, we're going to have to start doing, you know, get something out there, so, we'll be looking at that, as soon as we get to have a report, which will be about when?
Reports is challenging as well, because we have to get state data, what, what McLona McRoma is doing is, this is a much deeper analysis than Mr. Prada does, he's actually, this is actually pulling the demographic data from the state on births over the last five years, he's pulling ethnic data, so there's actually letters I get from City Hall, it's, it's a, it's a much more thorough analysis, I think, because it's got a better view. That being said, it comes with more paperwork and, and more legal involvement and everything else, because it's a release of data of the state and the information of the mayor, so it's, it's also about, nothing simple anymore.
No, but yeah, it's tough in the schools with the space.
Yeah, budget, like, so right now, I mean, we're just, we're monitoring where we're at, but I think the bussing's really complicated.
So, Joe, what part figure after one month?
You're, with, with, what I described, roughly half million to six hundred and fifty thousand, give or take, which, there is a little bit of room in the budget to absorb, like freezing textbooks, that sort of stuff, you know, it depends though, if, and I know sometimes that I'm always, special is always a concern, if we do get some stuff out of left field with them, we're mandated by that kind of stuff, so you know, it's just early right now, we kind of a little bit this far behind. We always went up with a few F T's that we come out of, last year, we had some overloads around the high school right now, that just came across, and that kind of stuff, so it's...
We do have the agreement with the city regarding that, was it happened by any research?
Yeah, those three hundred and fifty thousand access costs, that we're going to work out with them, but we made a budget cut to make that work, so, yeah, we're going to keep a close eye on.
But that's only for special?
That's only special.
That was the agreement. That's all, yeah.
Not that happy, no.
It is what it is, yeah. You got to get kids to school, and there's no room to stay for some person.
It is what it is.
On a side note, we're just going through the bus contract, the bus contract, since five years ago, sixty-five buses, all buses, we have eighty now, it's a five-year-old contract thing, so fifteen buses. Now, we had it West Side, I would say, that added not eight or nine buses alone, but you have that many buses and that amount of time is amazing.
But the whole group, these things, you know, there's a story for...
Oh, yeah, yeah, people are caught in runs, we're adding, you know.
About the showing district, the county that...
Oh, yeah, my old district, we're doing scholarships, we got kids in there, so...
We can't have somebody sell us a school and just move it into our town.
Yeah, you can't go with it.
I did try to buy some loans.
The article is great because it wondered how, how we funded and how our K system is. Anyway, um, okay.
For information, we have the calendar, which is, uh, we, we had a draft last spring. This puts us up to two years, so it's in there. We did, um, get it to the union, right? But they were like, that's part of the agreement, they're okay. So, that's done, and so the next meeting, um, it's at the budget table. You know, obviously, parents want, the teachers want for planning purposes. I put in my goals and the physical hands plan, I'll talk about it in the next, the next meeting. But I think we would please go over. We tried to save a multi-year goals, and they are drafts, but you approve, but you approve, I don't have any goals. I did send it to the Fed account for you, so that's information as well. And the administrators are using that as part of their aligning their goals or articles. The primary area, the administrators align it, uh, in the area of instruction. So, that's why it's in there for information. City PTO meeting is, uh, just sort of flyer today, quick flyer. Um, I mean, you can assign October eighteenth at Dorothy at seven o'clock, and a flyer will be going out soon, I think.
I can have the exact...
And good. That's, that's it on information.
Thank you. Thank you, it's my turn. I'm gonna give a whole lot. First thing I wanna nail down is that you seem to have me here, I thought you were in the June last meeting. Is who, can you hear me, Joe?
Yeah.
Can you all hear me?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, we'll see if you can hear.
Yeah, with their face and you, we can't hear.
Okay, sorry. I, I don't want you to, I'm speaking into the micro...
We don't have it close.
For those of you that are in the meeting, I get recommended to not speak into the microphone. And I speak softly, so... Thank you. And now, five minutes. All right, um, hey, it's connection. How many of us are actually going?
Next year.
One kid.
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm gonna go.
All right, I leave now to tell them...
You need it now? I'm gonna go.
Is Mike, is Mike on?
Uh, I'm not sure.
Ralph? Um, I don't know. Will, Gladys, you coming?
Yes.
Gladys is coming.
Just so you know, we're doing a presentation, and our kids were gonna be involved in it, but I chose not to have drive over, didn't miss half the day, full day of school, so it opened in my video conference. But we're doing on the, uh, the high school, Imagine High School, so we'll be on the state with, uh, with high school.
Well, that's why we're...
Good, I'm glad you're there.
Pat, you going?
I can't, I don't know if I can, I'm gonna try.
I was telling, okay.
I have no talent.
It's, it's okay, it's okay. If you could check down here and let me, let us know, within like forty-eight hours?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Just gonna mention, thank them.
No, I have no, Holly's going, Holly's going, probably.
Yes.
Unfortunately not, no.
Richard is not?
Yes.
Yes, Fred. Pat?
Uh, right now?
Right now, we need to know.
As of this moment, yes.
Well, no, there's also another reason, there's a reason, um, there's a...
Discount reason?
No, it's not a discount.
Of course it's a discount. I got a coupon.
The early bird special.
I don't want to leave your credit card.
Oh, it'll get you, it actually goes through money, just so we know.
All right, so...
He just started, he paid money.
Are we going to, uh, to how many people, what do you say?
No.
No, just answer that.
No, no, I'm like blind, but can I ask why you think that?
I think one of the good things about the board to go there is just to find out other things that are going on, to the more than Mary.
We'd like to go to the party. Well, I, oh, two of us, okay. Kathy, how many years you been on? Okay, so it's over ten, thank you. Gladys, you're twenty-four? Okay. It's your, this is your twenty-fifth? Right now, you're twenty-five.
Five years.
And you got fifteen. You got fifteen. And Richard is the same as you, right?
Yeah, I think we're twelve.
Twelve, yeah, okay, okay.
Thirty's a lot, sure.
All of these people are the...
Twenty-five, you don't have a son.
It does, trust me. The basic part is, I think, I was good at fifteen, and then she goes twenty-five, I'm like, right, so... God bless you, Gladys, just, God bless you. Okay, I need to know, who's staying over, this is the other piece, who needs rooms?
I do not need a room.
You do not need a room, you need a room.
I do not.
You do not need a room, you need a room. Pat, if you've come, you need a room. Are you ruling with...
No, 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 it's not like that.
The word "not like that" in Ralph's room.
Joe, talk to him, budget. Minimum two to three.
I'll sleep in the lobby before I share a room with somebody.
On sofas, that's how, I'm sorry, set aside the budget, trust me.
Okay, so we can already, uh, we'll know who has the room also, okay. That's it, good, that's taken care of, okay, now just the next piece. There was a survey that was emailed to everybody here by Ted Carroll for next, you done? Did everybody turn it back in, let's count. Could you possibly get that done by Prada?
Yes.
Okay, please. Fred, I knew your system, right? Survey and it's back.
Oh, yeah, I should know.
Because I know you, okay. Richard, have you even looked at it?
I actually think I did it, it's gonna be better.
You did?
I think it should be returned.
Honest to God?
I swear.
Jackson, no.
Thank you.
I have some more days, I'll do it.
Here's Dunn, you got it? It's, it's an email from Ted Carroll. All right? They've done, please, and by Friday. No, no, it has to be done now.
No, I, I just saw it now.
Saw the reminder, okay. That's what's over there.
I can't send anything to four minutes, I'm gonna have to look at it.
No, I can see, okay, tomorrow, but it's done tomorrow, okay? So, it's done by Friday? All right, thank you very much. You all done, everybody say that they're gonna get it, but if one person can talk at a time, that would be nice. Thank you. Now, we need committee reports, Kathy, you have anything?
Well, I'm sorry, I apologize, I didn't think the first meeting, but we did have a, we did have a sites and facilities meeting before the first board meeting last time. I understand that everyone received...
Yes, we all have.
With pictures.
You know what went on, all the lifting that went on by our custodial staff, and I just want to put on the record how valuable these people are to us and how great job they did for us over the summer. They are so appreciated, and Joe, so are you, thank you very much for what you do, and thank...
Off here, Rich, and Bill, and Bill always put up the high school, I mean, you know, everybody.
Rich, Joe, who is, who heads up that whole team, has been just terrific. All the things that have been done, the, the schools look beautiful.
They do.
They look beautiful.
Yeah, Marcy looks like it's transformed, and really, I mean, it's just like amazing.
The high school pretty open house, I saw the new, and the media center. It's a whole new feeling there.
It just looks great, it looks great. You know, it's just like in your own home when you start doing new things. And now, when I go to the gym, now the gym looks so tired because everything else is, you know, painted and new and now...
We're gonna exchange a little bit, Richard.
A little bit, but I have to say, thank you very much to our custodial staff, and thank you to Joe very much. Thank you very much to Rich, Joe.
And Joe, thank you for supervising all this. Joe, did we get these microphones on sale somewhere?
No, we used to have the microphones, is they have to be wired in, and this is, this is, it's just, everything, nothing is easy.
Everything's coming, everything's coming.
It is coming, so, so, this is what it's meant.
It's almost a year, it's almost a year, and I'm thinking, it's never worked right, my husband's...
I know that, and, and we were paid for them completely, so what about that?
We're using CJEF money.
And you have, you know, Milton, Milton's getting these out of here and doing...
No, they have to be wired to the floor, because the issue is there's twenty mics to put on the frequency to get a channel, is the issue. And now you put in cell phones.
So, I'm not asking you to be the electronic person, I just... Fred, Joe?
Yes, uh, I am the board representative of the AIS PTO. Uh, we haven't, they have, sorry, AIS PTO has not had their first meeting yet. It's scheduled for October fourth at seven PM in the AIS Media Center. They provide me some information to share with the board tonight, and, uh, so that's what I'm doing. They've completed their first and only major fundraiser of the year, uh, and I believe it was, well, I'm not exactly sure exactly when they did it, but it was the Apex Fund Run, they just completed that. And then last Sunday, they celebrated, uh, the beginning of school with their annual welcome back family funding. Just wanna share that, I'm interested in coming to the PTO meeting on October fourth at seven PM at the AIS Media Center.
And you reported, that's good, thank you. Richard, do you have any committee reports for us?
No, I do not, although Fred and I are lucky enough to be sitting on negotiation sessions tomorrow for teachers that we can hardly wait for.
How much fun can you...
So much fun, it's scary.
Okay. I am in here, no.
Um, no, Rich, PTO, we're not meeting yet, and I did not attend the King Street one last night. Who else is King Street? Do you have anyone else? No, I, I will start attending those people's, King Street does have a street, okay, call in. So, which is helpful, so, um, I'll start attending.
Okay, thank you. Maddie, do you know that?
I would like to think before we went off on our summer vacation to meet and, um, really, um, look at the new superintendent evaluation that we talked about, um, just briefly to look at and discuss it. We don't know who's gonna chair the committee, kind of two thousand and seventeen, but I think some very important parts the board have got a mass evaluation process. And I'm trying to figure out a date that we could do it, it'll take no more than an hour, no more than an hour. Could we do it before the next board meeting?
Sure, if you want.
Just to, just review from the new K form that they sent us last year when we did superintendent evaluation process. That's it.
Do we want to roll against the workshop, or how long's the workshop?
The workshop next month? No, that's, that's a, that's a heat dinner and workshop, we gotta... She, then before the, the meeting, when the seven...
I think, uh, we, uh, next schedule meeting, it was the thirteenth. If we could get here like, um, six fifteen, six fifteen, we'd be done.
Okay, I'll send notice to everybody else. Okay.
Okay.
Is that making it possible for you?
Me? It's a Thursday, it's a Thursday, right? Isn't it?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I'm not sure at all, I'm like...
All right.
And, could I just, uh, this is on my heart?
Just come.
And, and I really need to sort of lay this out. If I'm without hiring process, uh, last, at the last report, we hired ninety new people. And, and I was going to be, but what would you, honest? The community is, is very concerned that we're getting to the point where our staff does not reflect our community, and we're talking about our minority teachers. And I think I asked a question before, what plan do we have in place or working on to recruit minority teachers? And, um, even though we hired ninety last month, oh, well, the ninety that started off the seat, is that land in conjunction with our funded action plan? And how often do we review our, uh, funded action plan when we are doing that hiring process? There's a concern about how we're going about hiring people. Uh, we just don't want minority, and, and I'm gonna be, I'll say African-American people to fill out the application, and then they never get a call, no one, no one, never hears what happens in their application. So, my question before it gets blown out anymore is, what plan do we have in place to do minority recruitment for, um, for our staff? And how we gonna go about doing it? And how are we going to work with community people at all colleges, African-American college, to get these people here to be in there?
Okay, um, I, um, the reason I'm speaking is because Ken's not there, all right? And I don't think it's fair to Ken, nor to Sal, to answer without the other one.
I'm not asking anyone to answer, I'm just, I'm just...
No, but that's, stay on points, and, and someone will address it.
Yeah.
Okay, at the next meeting, okay?
And we also look at, my, my, my question would be, can we look at our funded action plan? Because we haven't reviewed our funded action plan in the past fifteen years, and that's very important when you're doing hiring.
Are you seeing that? All right, so, see that?
Presentation in the next meeting.
That's what I'm saying, yes. Yeah, that's why, it's not science stuff, but Ralph, you're not getting away without seeing it. Go, Ralph.
After following that, um, great, great place that they're, uh, you know, I mean, you're not walking by. And just as, you know, beginning of the year, and I was there, and they did, they have a lot of fundraising stuff coming up. And, um, they liked, I get to see, um, the principal's office and the new, um, doorway, which used to be a little sand trap over there.
It's all filled in.
Great, look, looks great, and I said, the top of the cap, he said, like, this, that Joe and Rich and everybody, um, you know, I've been at a couple of schools so far, seen everything in place. It does make, the feeling is just, it just makes everybody feel a little better, you know, a little minded things that we do. You know, try to do, show appreciation for the staff and people, uh, that are there, it just, it helps tonight, I appreciate what everybody does. Also, Sal, rep for Sally Ralph also, and their meeting is October fourth, I believe, so I'll be attending that also.
Excellent, thank you.
And I'm not gonna share a room with anyone.
I have you, Ralph, and Pat, together.
Let's go.
Okay. And we're gonna put it in the minutes, so that everybody knows you guys are super.
I don't think there's any real plausible reason to refer to it exactly in that way.
I say something, um, for question?
Not that there's anything...
Okay, um, can we, who, who have Pat anything?
We have...
We do, excuse me. Okay, um, could be, even without being a representative.
Well, it's legal matter, isn't it?
Just informed by...
That is the purpose of going in.
Okay.
Okay, do I get a motion? Go.
Motion to executive session.
Say.
All right, give it a second, five minutes, if you're ready, please.
Thank you for coming. Proud of you guys, you hung instead of going in two steps, that's fair.